Good evening and welcome to the July 27, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tom Kiger and I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner from the Gastonia Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our audience, I would like to present your county commissioners beginning on my far right and we have one commissioner that is calling in who would be on the far right, Commissioner Fraley.
Alan Fraley, Chair of Township.
Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Bob Hovis, Craters Mountain Township.
Thank you, gentlemen. If we could please stand for the invocation by Commissioner Hovis and I will lead us in the pledge.
Please bow with me. Gracious Father, as we come before you and our public audience tonight to take care of the business of this county, let us all be mindful of the individuals who are still suffering from this pandemic. This is continuing to cause pain in many families, many businesses, and continues to stifle the workforce in this country. Father, we ask your grace and your blessing to help us as individuals do everything we can in our power to mitigate exposure to others and to do the right thing by our neighbors and our friends. Father, we ask your blessings on our actions about this county tonight, that we continue to show leadership, guidance, and keep your thoughts in our actions. We ask that in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty Okay, the first order of business is a public hearing. The commission will take citizen comment. For a public hearing on the ETJ appointments, Town of Stanley Planning and Zoning Board, and the Stanley Board of Adjustments. Before we begin, let me outline the rules of procedure for the hearings. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the chair, then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. They will state their name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes and questions shall be directed to the chair. The chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearing. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing? Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Hovis, and we're going to get a lot of that tonight, I think. All those in favor? Mr. Fraley, in favor of going into the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. The county commission will take citizen comment concerning applications submitted at or before the public hearing for two ETJ appointments to the Stanley Planning and Zoning Board and one ETJ appointment to the Board of Adjustments. The Stanley Council has recommended the reappointment of Mr. John Miller and the appointment of Ms. Judy Billings as the ETJ members to the Planning and Zoning Board and the reappointment of Mr. John Miller to the Board of Adjustments. I will ask for a vote on the appointments of Mr. John Miller and Judy Billings as the ETJ members. I was asked to do these separately. Do you want me to break those two down?
Everyone.
Okay. The motion is for the appointment of Ms. Judy Billings as an ETJ member and to the Planning Board of Stanley. Is there a motion? Mr. Hovis makes the motion, Mr. Brown makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Fraley?
Yay.
Okay. It's unanimous. And now we will take the appointment recommendation of Mr. John Miller. Pardon?
Were there any citizens?
No, but no one raised their hand or anything. Okay. Back to the ETJ and zoning board of both, no, the reappointment of John Miller to the Board of Adjustments. Is there a motion? Well, that will fail by lack of a motion. Correct? Okay. Are there any other additional applications that you received before? Okay.
Mr. Miller is also recommended for the Planning Board of Stanley.
Okay. Is there a motion to name him to the Planning Board? It too fails for lack of a motion. If there's no additional comments, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Somebody second.
Mr. Hovis makes the motion, Mr. Brown makes the second. All those in favor? Mr. Fraley? Donna, do I need to ask for Fraley's vote first?
Either way.
Approval of the business agenda. Are there any revisions to the business agenda? Any items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Mr. Hovis is likely to pull somewhere over there.
I think he got his answer. Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Hovis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Fraley?
Yay.
All right, it's unanimous.
My report.
Do I hear a motion to approve the business agenda? Okay, and your report. Okay. Are there any appointments from Mr. Fraley?
If one of you guys would mind reading mine, Donna sent me the pink sheet, but I
Okay, that took care of that? Okay, it's written here again. All right. Approval of
do not have it with me, or I can make them next time.
the minutes you were provided with the draft minutes for the June 8 special meeting and Mr. Hovis will be happy to make them for you. the June 22 regular session. Are there any revisions to the minutes? If not, motion by
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hovis, second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Fraley?
Certainly. Alan will be glad to. Commissioner Fraley has several reappointments. I will
Yay.
It is unanimous. Thank you.
read them all and we will act on those at the single vote. To the Historic Preservation
Our next item is citizen recognition. Adam, are there any ones signed up?
Commission, Robert Carpenter requesting reappointment. To the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council,
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we'll pass that over. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
reappointment being requested for Chad Hawkins. To the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council,
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion?
an application has been received from Andrew Scragg. And also a reappointment to the Nursing
All those in favor? Mr. Fraley?
Home Community Advisory Committee, Roberta Flay. Those are all four.
Yay.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. I'll second that. Okay, motion by Mr. Hovis, second by Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? Nothing pulled? Nothing added by majority for discussion? All those in favor?
Yay.
Commissioner Committee reports.
None, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brown?
I have no appointments and no committee reports, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hovis?
Mr. Chair, I have no reports referencing the committees that I serve on, although I will, do want the public to know that we have Commissioner Worley not with us tonight. That's because he's in Washington, helping us work towards the crossing there at Franklin Square into the property at Lowell where we've had those mega warehouses being built for that economic development action. We're looking for federal funds to help assist that crossing and connection to the boulevard and across to that development. We were fairly close last time we made application, but Mr. Worley's up there along with the city contingent from the City of Gastonia and Lowell, and we expect them to bring home the bacon. No pun intended.
Thank you very much. I have no appointments, nor do I have a report tonight. That brings us to the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask our diversity and inclusion officer, Pearl Burris Floyd, to come to the podium. She has an update for you all tonight on the work that's been underway since late last year. She will share some information with you about that work and then our path forward in terms of the future work plan. I will say that you have a copy of some accomplishments at your seat, and then following the presentation tonight, we can have subsequent conversations around the work that we're looking to accomplish over the course of the next year. We have, we as a collective, and Pearl will share more about the team that she has assembled, have accomplished a tremendous amount of really good work over the course of the last few months. So I will yield my time and hand it over to Pearl.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the other commissioners. It's an odd feeling to be standing here behind this podium, making a presentation to the Board of Commissioners, but it is indeed an honor to have this opportunity. I don't take it lightly that this county saw fit to make this opportunity available to make sure that we continue to improve our way of doing business, what we're trying to do here in Gaston County, and how we are moving toward continuing our quest to be the employer of choice. So I'm honored to have this opportunity and thank you very much. Before I begin, I don't have a lot of slides, but I have a lot of information. And I know that I'm the only thing that's keeping you guys from having your dinner and time at home, so I will be brief. But I must thank some people and acknowledge them because a lot of work has been done and I didn't do it by myself. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners. At a time when there's so much strife in our community, you have stepped forward and you have worked to make sure that every voice is heard, that people are valued, and that's in keeping with our strategic plan and how we look at each other. So I thank you for being stand-up individuals, taking the lumps, and keeping on going. Secondly, I'd like to thank our county manager, Dr. Eagle, who has been a visionary in putting this plan together. She gave me my marching orders from the very beginning, and I have done everything that I could to make sure that I stayed on task, focused, and made sure those accomplishments came to fruition. So thank you, Dr. Eagle. Next, I'd like to thank the MAC team. That's the Multicultural Affairs Committee. They have worked with me from the beginning to accomplish all of this great work, and I'll talk more about them. But they're all, a number of them are along the back wall. I don't know if I'm in a Baptist church or what, because everyone's on the back wall. But if you are on the MAC team, please stand. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We'll talk more about them. So let's see. We have five areas to talk about tonight. Our mission, vision, goals, and values, the DEI strategic plan, the Multicultural Affairs Committee, major accomplishments, and future work. So why diversity, equity, and inclusion? Well, I'll start by telling you what it is not. DEI is not a quick fix. It's not confrontational. It's not about changing individuals. It's not about problem solving. It's not a fad. It's not CRT, Critical Race Theory, has absolutely nothing to do with DEI. And it's not an advocacy group or a movement. But what is it? It's described as a beginning, an introspective journey where we examine ourselves. After all, that's all that we can be in charge of. We can't be in charge of each other. It's thought provoking. We examine our why, why our behaviors are the way they are, how do we feel deep within ourselves about others, other individuals, whatever the differences are. It's an opportunity to create long-term success. And it's not a destination. You don't just get to DEI. It's a journey, and it's progressive as we work through our issues. Our mission, vision, and goals, values, each department will have a strategic plan that is aligned with the overall county-wide strategic plan, and DEI is no exception. The growth and development of DEI is data-driven and based on best practices. So it's not pie in the sky. The strategic plan for DEI was completed in March and was presented to the county manager, Dr. Eagle, and the executive leadership team, and they approved it on March 23. So we're keeping abreast of what the expectations are for all county areas. The Multicultural Affairs Team, I couldn't do this work without this talented group of volunteers representing 13 departments and spending over 42 hours of meetings where we discussed everything, our strategic plan, how did we get there, what did we feel, how did we get to this point? And they were the ones who listened and brought their input and their expertise. And the major accomplishments, well, you have a handout at your desk about some of those, and I'll give you a highlight and a snapshot of some of those. The DEI strategic plan, what you're seeing are the initiatives and the key performance indicators are the metrics that this area has put together to make sure that we are accountable, that we are evidence-based, and that this data-driven process is supported by best practices. The snapshot generates a measurable means by which everything that's done in diversity, equity, and inclusion is measurable, and therefore we can be held accountable for our progress. Or we can find areas where we have not made progress and pay close attention to those things. That's the only way that we will become the employer of choice, as we value all people and hear all voices and make sure that there's a safe place for our employees to come and talk about their concerns without retaliation and On this slide, you see the members and part, and a picture with some of the members of the MAC team. I call them my super, my DEI superheroes. They are the MAC team. There's nothing that I can ask of them that they won't charge in and tackle. And that's really unusual, because sometimes people get into stressful arguments. We don't do that. It's a safe place. They serve as a think tank and an idea tank. They serve as educators, because you cannot share with people what you don't know. So we play strict attention to that as well. And we look to continue this process moving into this fiscal year and to make sure that we stay on task. They hold me accountable, and I think that's excellent because we work together as a team. And I am, I am not the sage on the stage knowing everything and acting on my own. So that is comforting when you know that others have the best interest of all employees here at Gaston County Government, and that they will speak up for them and make sure that as we move forward, we do our jobs well. This slide shares some of the highlights, and you have some of the rest of them on your handout, so I won't go through that. But the listening tour and the employee engagement has been phenomenal. We've been able to talk to half of the 1,800-plus employees here in, with Gaston County Government, and that was in the face of the pandemic. If the pandemic had not been here, we would have reached all of them. And with the county manager getting ready to begin her tour, we hope to tag-team and do some of that together for some of the areas that have been, are still waiting to hear and talk about DEI. We formed the DEI network and with Gaston College and their DEI coordinator and with the City of Gastonia's coordinator. And we meet to discuss the issues that we have been working toward. We're in different areas and we have a different way of approaching the issues. County government is not city government and certainly not education. But on these three minds, and soon we'll have five, we will be working through the issues, doing the pro and cons of how we should approach issues, tag-teaming and collaborating with the business, with the business community and with private citizens across Gaston County. We're excited about the progress that we're making and the intentionality in which we're going through this process. And lastly, the path forward. What are the future plans? What are we going to be doing? And another snapshot of some of the things that we will be working on and continuing to work on in this fiscal year. The MWEBE Engagement and Implementation Resolution that this commission passed this spring, is one of those areas that we will be focusing on and making sure that we have a listening ear and feet on the ground to help move this forward. We were so appreciative of the approval of additional FTEs so that there will be a person looking and handling these contracts and making sure that there are opportunities for minority and women business owners. We're going to continue the analysis of the county workforce data based upon demographics. And the IT department has been instrumental in working with us as we've collaborated, DEI and HR, collaborating on having a program that we can retrieve the data that's already in our system. And that is almost completed. So in the next update, you'll hear about that and see some of the reports. And we're going to continue to review and policies and make sure that those policies are the best and that they meet the standard that treats everyone equally and with equity as well. And one of the areas that we were successful with has been providing education, and we will continue in that path so that the MAC team will begin to divide into areas so we can start a training program for the employees of Gaston County. So we're excited about this opportunity. Again, I thank you, commissioners, for all that you can continue to do. I know the sacrifice that you're making. And just keep pressing forward. If there are any questions, I'll entertain those now.
Well, Pearl, appreciate it. It was a great presentation. I want to, before I forget, thank the team that worked with you on this. Thank the county manager for having the foresight to move something like this forward. Questions from the board or observations? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pearl, thank you so much for what you're doing. Dr. Eagle, you guys seem to get it in what we're trying to achieve. And thank you to the board members who work diligently. You know, those hours that they put in, that they don't have to. Those are volunteer hours that they put in to try to work and bring us to a different phase of where we're trying to be. And it's a hard task, I understand. I'm so grateful
are the best and that they meet the standard that treats everyone equally and with equity as well. And one of the areas that we were successful with has been providing education, and we will continue in that path, so that the MAC team will begin to divide into areas, so we can start a training program for the employees of Gaston County. So we're excited about this opportunity. Again, I thank you, commissioners, for all that you can continue to do. I know the sacrifice that you're making, and just keep pressing forward. If there are any questions, I'll entertain those now.
Well, Pearl, appreciate it. It was a great presentation, and I want to, before I forget, thank the team that worked with you on this. Thank the county manager for having the foresight to move something like this forward. Questions from the board or observations? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pearl, thank you so much for what you're doing. Dr. Eagle, you guys seem to get it in what we're trying to achieve, and thank you to the board members who work diligently, you know, those hours that they put in, that they don't have to. Those are volunteer hours that they put in to try to work and bring us to a different phase of where we're trying to be. And it's a hard task, I understand. I'm so grateful that other municipalities joined in. I'd like to see more of that, if we could do something with those municipalities, even if it's lending our own Pearl to those people with the help of what's going on. I just, I just think that this county deserves, we have so many things that are going on so good here compared, and I hate to say it to our neighbors west or east of us, that we have some things that we can do right, and we can lead by example, and then Pearl, thank you for your leadership on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll echo Mr. Brown's comments, Ms. Floyd, and at the same time, as we, as the county, you know, we've got a lot of folks in the next five to 10 years that are going to be aging out and retiring and moving forward, we need to work very hard on our promotables list, and we need to know what interests individuals have in different positions, moving up the ladder and doing different things, moving into a different department. And you're positioned to where we can fetter some of that knowledge out of individuals and find the proper place to help them meet their objectives, as well as the county's long-term objectives. And that's very important in any organization, especially in government. I come from business, and we had a, what we called a promotables list, that we nurtured and worked with daily, and the activity of your group is nothing different than that. It's just putting it into a formal plan and putting people in a place where they think they would want to be. And at the same time, if they think they want to be there, they can follow their counterpart that's currently in a role similar to what they'd like to for a day or two under the auspices of this program, and find out if that creek's too deep, or if it's too shallow to meet their long-term goals. So we, as a county, need to do more for that, for our employees, in recognizing the value that that brings long-term. We're not going to see it day one, but 10, 12 years down the road, I think we'll see a lot of other advantages for the involvement at this level, and we appreciate your actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Fraley?
Yes. Pearl, I'd just like to say thank you for the presentation first, the work you're doing, and you know, you have my phone number, and call me anytime, I can be of service. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a comment or two. The, you know, over the years, I've served on so many different boards around the county and committees, and I remember going on DSS or the Health Department or the old Mental Health, everybody, today's society, we have such a vocabulary of acronyms, and I would think many people, you know, know very little about the thousands or millions of acronyms that we use, and I did notice, is this something that we're going to, that the public gets their hands on?
It will be, Mr. Chairman.
I just noticed that DEI is listed numerous times, but it doesn't have the words of what it stands for anywhere on there.
We'll fix that.
And we may want...
It will be changed.
Yeah, we'll scrub that. Yeah, that's a good point.
But again, thank you very much, and I sure hope this picks up more speed instead of just coasting. I hope that we really move forward with this.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Make just a couple of comments related to the presentation and the feedback from, from the board. I appreciate that greatly. You know, during the budget conversations, we talked a lot about recruitment and retention, and Pearl used the phrase, that's one of my favorites, "When we think about the future of county government and really becoming an employer of choice." So her work with this team is heavily focused on creating an environment where we can have the right kind of dialogue, and we can support our most valuable asset, which is our employees. That being said, there's lots of conversation in the community about that dialogue and how we connect with our community. So we intentionally focused inside first to get our house in order and understand how we're supporting our employees before we take that outside to the community, and we ask the question often, how are we serving our community? What are their needs? And this kind of work positions us to be responsive to and understand what the needs of the community are as we go out and provide county services on your behalf. So I just wanted to add, add those comments as we kind of think about the path forward in this body of work. I will send you all an electronic copy of the presentation, so you'll have that at your disposal. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, is there a county attorney report?
No such report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to add that Courtney Rogers, our deputy county attorney, is filling in for Jonathan Sink this evening, and we welcome her up here with us this evening. Mr. Brown, do you have any other matter you'd like to bring before the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry about, should have brought this up earlier. I attended the CAC groundbreaking this week out at, on South New Hope there at City Church. I want to give it to Adam and the group for putting together something that was amazing, and one of the things that was going on there, they had hammers, and we tried to make sure everybody who was a adjoining partner, from the sheriff to Dr. Eagle, to all the people around who were going to have a part in doing that, that they placed these hammers in their offices to understand what we're doing about building this and what it's going to mean. There's one in the commissioner's room in our office in there, that we put one in there. So, Adam, I want to tell you, your staff man, that was, that was a bang-up job. It was, there were a lot of people there doing things, everybody had a part in that, but the CAC, thank you to Dr. Eagle, also to Earl for, when we first started this journey of looking to not having a basement for these kids to come in and talk, and talk about some of the things that are horrendous. But we, we're trying to make sure that we get those hammers to every police chief that they got, so they can understand, put it in there to, it really stands for something of what we're trying to achieve here, that no kid should have to go through that, whether a child or into your adult ages, but I just wanted to thank the board also, to everybody involved. Pam did a great job out there of facilitating what that is about, and maybe we can do a follow-up in the next couple of weeks on where we are on that, just to kind of give the, maybe we can put the pictures up on the TV or something, but it was a great event, and I just wanted to pass that along to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anything else? I would like to point out that in the consent agenda, the board voted to cancel the August 10th work session, and it will be combined with the August 24th regular voting meeting. This concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next combined work session, regular meeting, as I stated, is the 24th of August. Thank you for watching. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Mr. Brown makes the motion. Mr. Hovis makes the second. All those in favor?
Yay.
Mr. Fraley, it's unanimous, thank you.